We've got a couple orders today. The first one's public hearing. Local law motorized vehicles. Do they have a motion to open that public hearing?
Who'll make the motion, man?
I'll second.
Tom Taylor?
Aye.
Anybody got any comments on the local law motorized vehicles? Please try to keep your comments to three to five minutes if possible.
I have a map if I could just pass out to the board. For those of you that don't know me, Josh Lipaker, president of the Soulville Association for Lewis County. The map shows similar to the application there for the downtown revitalization initiative. It shows a map which is Trail C-5B going to Tops Parking Lot. Just with the local law that was mentioned, would that eliminate the recreational vehicles for snowmobiling down to the parking lot? The local club has asked me at our last meeting. It goes from the sheriff's office and go from the sheriff's office down to Tops Plaza. That was their concern.
Let me, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Let me just, I'll read the local law so everybody knows what we're talking about. Basically what it is, it's the Village of Lawwell, Local Law Number Seven of the year 2022. A local law to run chapter 189 of the Code of the Village of Lawwell. Being enacted by the village board of the Village of Lawwell as follows. Section One Authority, the local law is enacted to present to the authority of the New York State Municipal Home Rule Law and the New York State Village Law. Section Two, Chapter 189 of the Code of the Village Law should be amended by adding an article of three as follows. Article Nine, Special Designated Trails. It should be unlawful to operate any motorized vehicle on any special trails within the village's limits to include motorized bicycles and other types of motorized equipment. The only exception would be the trail that leads to Tops Plaza in the village. And then it just goes on to say section three, the balance of 189, and everything stays the same. So they have made arrangements so they can get to Tops Plaza.
Okay, with that, the definition of special trails was the question I had.
Pardon?
The definition of special trails.
It would be any trail that would go through the Village of Lawwell. Say, for example, you got the railroad bed from Craft Knights all the way over to pass the school there, bus garage, or that way. Say that turned into a trail. Walking trail probably be fine, but no motorized vehicles now.
Okay, just because those trails do move, like the snow sled trails do move, I mean, it's an exception?
Well, the village itself, we're working on a grant to do a bunch of major renovations to our veterans park, and we're planning on putting walking trails and things up there, and we don't want motorized vehicles on those trails.
Correct, understood. Just the only other comment I had was the, if it could be identified for, so it's not on so much on the outskirts, more identified to the neighborhood commercial area one and two, which is the central hub of the village. That way, if other snow sled trails were to come on the outskirts, it wouldn't have to be an amended section to the local law for that. Or if local residents were to leave on the outskirts on their snowmobiles to go to private or club trails, to go to tug hill, would they have to trailer to the hill?
The main thing is to keep motorized vehicles out of the center of the village.
That's, I understand that. That's why I would say it was more tied to the commercial area one and two.
Wouldn't Tops Plaza be considered a trailhead for people to be able to take their sleds there and then go from the trailhead to wherever they want on the hill? I would assume that would be case.
Well, hopefully in the DRI, that is a plan for Tops Plaza, a trailhead given there so they can get their gas and everything.
The last comment was just having that included in the DRI and having the overall broad section of that local law. It may, depends how the state looks at it, it may affect that DRI by having that in there.
But one other thing I will say about the DRI, we've had three meetings for the state since we applied. And one of the last meetings, they asked us if we would be willing to downsize the DRI footprint, which they were basically thinking they didn't want this other part of the village, they wanted it more uptown, center of the village. I'm not saying that's going to happen. They've asked everybody that's applied for DRI, they've asked the same question. But I'm saying possibly this law might affect it, but possibly not, to the way they're thinking.
I just, just looking outside in there, there's a lot of work involved in the DRI. I don't want to put a lot of time into it, just whether that local law might be a wild card, affect it, but that's all I had. Joe?
Yep. Thank you. Same somewhat of what Josh has already said. But I don't see in here where it talks about what you were saying, trailhead over there. You read it as though it was in this local law. It's not in the copy I got, the draft copy.
I changed it this week and brought it by our attorney because of concerns I was getting from people that were involved with the snowmobile and the trailhead. And I figured we could incorporate so they could still have their trailhead down there.
Okay, so is that going to be republished so that...
I mean, it's been redrafted, I mean, and it was run by our attorney and he said it was fine.
Yeah. Okay, do you have a special trail, anything in the village right now marked a special trail?
No.
That this law would apply to? No, okay.
But like I said, we are planning two special trails up there as veterans park.
Are they part of the DRI?
That's part of a village project.
Part of a village project, okay. There is some concern that the DRI, have you talked to the planning department at all about when this came up? Is that maybe where that trail, the Tops, came up? Because they were, they're very concerned right now. If that wasn't in it, it probably would affect the DRI because we'd have to amend it. So that being in it helps.
Has anybody from the county talked to us about this?
Pardon?
Has anybody from the county talked to us about this at Congress meeting?
You ask your mayor.
No, they haven't.
No, no, but haven't you talked to them?
I don't feel I should have to talk to them on something that the village wants to do.
So you didn't know that trail was in the DRI or anything?
I knew all about the trailhead.
That's what, that's what we thought.
That's why I made this change that I just read. The only exception would be the trail that leads to Tops Plaza.
And appreciate that, and that's good that it's something like that. But he asked, why don't we talk to you? Our assumption was you've been involved with the DRI and, you know, knew about it.
I'm going to say this to you, Dick.
Yeah.
The county's been working on buying this railroad bed. Not one person from that county has come and talked to anybody at the village. And a lot of that rail bed goes right through the center of the village.
I believe that, I believe that the DRI trail is in that, is part of that too.
So I'm just saying that, you know, nobody from the county's ever approached us. And the other thing that nobody's interested in, seems to be interested in, once you guys take over that trail, for the railroad bed, make trails, whatever you're going to do with it. Every single town and village where that land goes through, all of a sudden, all that more taxes and billings that the taxpayers are going to have to pick up that extra. There's a lot of things you guys haven't looked at, and a lot of things I haven't looked at too. But I'm just saying, it's, I think it's a slam dunk, but it's going to cost everybody.
I think that, Joe, with that assumption was they pay like eleven thousand dollars in taxes to the village? The village pays out over twelve thousand.
Ineasement costs.
Ineasement costs.
So you're not going to pay that twelve thousand?
So you're not, it's going to be a wash. If anything, if you gain on that side of things, that's just, here and there.
If you've got more to do, you've got to go under or over that, you're not going to have the easement costs here.
All this law is trying to do, as it's written, is make it for walking trails, snowshoes, and what have you. If we allow for ATVs, snowmobiles, who's going to walk it? And if we're talking about a safety issue, you're going to get hit on that as much as you are on the road. I think, I think the theory of it being a walking trail in itself is not a bad idea. But, and Dick, when you and I had the discussion, you said if we don't want ATVs, there won't be ATVs. So this shouldn't be, this shouldn't be an issue.
The only issue then, as I see it, is it talks about special trails, which you don't have right now. And anything that's done with that road is three years out by the time we get the surveys done, the planning and stuff done. So that's the other point that I've got. This seems to be premature.
Well, not really, Dick, because my figuring on this is I want to be ahead of the curve. I don't want to be at the end of the curve. Right now, you've taken the village, you get a snowmobile or a four wheeler run up and down the road. Okay, that's covered under our motor vehicle traffic law. We get a snowmobile, get a walking trail that they run snowmobiles or ATVs on, right now, we have no way to enforce it. We have this local law, we can enforce that.
Joe, I'm a hundred percent behind the local law, especially now that you've included that trail up there. The point is, it just seems a little premature when you don't have a special trail now to talk about. And that brings me to my last point. I've had several calls about e-bikes. People our ages, the older of us in here, they're getting into these e-bikes. I can't find any place that says an e-bike is a motorized vehicle. It's a battery and a gear system. So if you enact this in that way, because you said this is meant to cover the whole village, those that have bought e-bikes right now and are riding them, can they ride them in the village?
I see people riding motorcycles.
Does this, how does this law affect that's the question?
I'm just talking on the trail, Dick.
Okay, so maybe you want to think about putting in this law that it doesn't affect e-bikes on the streets of the Village of Lawwell and stuff. Just working over what I see as some problems in there, Joe.
Well, the only thing, I have seen a few problems myself, but those, I feel we need to put some definitions and things in.
Yeah, yeah, yep. That's fine. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything on motorized vehicles?
I am, Joe. I'm Dennis Bishop. I've lived in here in the village for most of my life. Thank you for writing this law, and thank you for giving me the chance to say a few words in support of this proposed law. In 2012, Lewis County conjured up a Rails to Trail project and won a state grant to implement it for several hundred thousand dollars. Their rhetoric then, as it is now, was that they would create walking and biking trails. But their intent then, as it is now, was to create a snowmobile four wheeler corridor straight through Lawwell. Village and county residents overwhelmingly rejected this plan. And finally, Legislative Chair Jack Bush dropped the plan. Now our county's back at it again. They can't seem to ever let a bad plan go to waste. This time, it's a multimillion dollar project that's just as poorly thought out as before. But have no doubts about it, they aim to make the Village of Lawwell a snowmobile four wheeler corridor. Of course, they're calling it a walking trail. Any of this sound familiar to you? I've owned land in the town of Turin for over thirty years and have experienced up close the havoc created by snowmobiles and four wheelers that are trucked here from afar. This is our home, but to these folks, they regard it as their private playground and regularly ignore the minimal laws that are placed to protect them and hopefully us. Their arrogance and their recklessness is clearly documented in the number of collisions, airlifts, deaths, broken bones, trespass complaints, and roadway and property, private property damage that occur every year. I don't understand why, but legislators Charteron and Moorehan, who represent almost all of the village residents, seem to turn a blind eye to the fact that a majority of the village voters are against this Rails to Trails project. Our residents see this project for exactly what it is. It's a problem and a danger for our village, and it's a colossal waste of our money. Therefore, lacking the support of the legislators elected to represent us here on the county level, I ask our village trustees to act in our best interest and pass this law tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else have anything?
I'm not a public speaker. My name is Sydney Destin. I live on Main Street. But I second everything Dennis Bishop just said.
Anybody else have anything on motorized vehicles?
I'm Danny Anzie. My mind goes back to the early, late 50s, early, probably fifty-six or seventy, nineteen fifty-six or seventy. The railroad was deciding to terminate passenger traffic on the rail here. I went to school in Martinsburg. My teacher, wisely, decided that she should arrange for her students to go and ride the trail in passenger service before it was discontinued. We went down to Lyons Ball. There was a bus took us down, brought us back. I have imprinted in my memory that entire event. I personally like rails. I like railroads. I like old railroad beds. I'm looking all the time and seeing old railroad roads. I actually have one that's in the property that I own, but they started to build through my woods. It's quite a thing. What I'm saying is that, has anybody ever actually considered the possibility of making this rail system between here and Croben into a museum? What, I drive through old forests. They have these little carts. You can pedal on it. You can move on the rails. You can enjoy the thing as it was originally built. It'll leisurely pace. No noise, no muss, no fuss. I would be an advocate of that. I would be an advocate of making this rail trail into a museum. Keep it the way it is. Let people enjoy some of what used to be. That's all I can say. I, please don't tear it up. And furthermore, I agree with Dennis, and I own property in Turin. I bought a snowmobile in nineteen sixty-one. When you had a seven or eight horse, you could go riding wherever you wanted to at a slow, leisurely pace. They've turned, they've turned our roads and fields into what I'll call a hellhole, really. I feel strongly about it. I still, I have a four wheeler. They tear things up. Dennis has this very little disregard for, some places, these things come on our road, and it is dangerous to me as a motorist at night. I, please don't, please don't turn this into a motorized thing, whatever you do. And please consider making the entire thing into a museum. Keep it the way it was. Let people enjoy. Go back in time, whatever, sixty, seventy years.
Well, to your information, that's what the railroad sparkle society of Croben's trying to do. They would like to get a scenic train to run back and forth through there, possibly the rail bikes like you were talking about.
Please do that. That's all I can say. And the neighbors, I can't believe that the neighbors along the trip, the rails, would object to something hazardous. Thank you. I didn't know that.
Anybody else have anything on motorized vehicle law? If not, we'll leave the public hearing open in case somebody else comes in. I believe Brian Fens may have here now. He had one for Dr. Turek.
Thank you. First, I thought we were meeting on the twenty-first with the young ladies that started our banner project a few years ago. So hopefully we can get back on your agenda for next month and make them come down and present to you as well. But I just want to, just want to share with you some of our concerns with our banner project. You know, every, every good thing that we do, there's always at the expense of something else. And the young ladies that put this together to honor our veterans did it in all good intentions. It grew. It started what we thought were going to be maybe twenty banners, and that has grown to about sixty banners, sixty plus banners. And in the first year, we had the support of the village in helping us put those up. It was in the minutes of December eighteenth, when it was, two thousand eighteen, when it was presented to this board by Suzanne Schwarting. And then when the girls came back in November of two thousand nineteen, they, they updated you folks on how it was going, and they were confirming that they would have the support of the DPW, which they walked away understanding that's what was going to happen. And I understand that the county, with Tim Haunt and Paul Donas, the past couple of years, we've made it work. This year, however, we had a couple of things happen. We couldn't get them initially put up because the county bought a new bucket truck, and there has to be some training with that. They just be able to allow the Marine Corps League to grab that and help put those banners up. But with the new truck, they couldn't do that. They have to have an operator. We've approached this board, and this board has told us that they can no longer help us at all. And we've got two young ladies that are graduating in June, and I'm not sure how this is going to move forward with honoring our vets if we don't have the support from the village. And I understand you don't have a bucket truck. I'm not sure if you have somebody that, that has the training to operate a bucket truck, to work in collaboration with the county to get, to ensure that we continue to honor our veterans. So I know they're going to be looking for continued support to go back to that two thousand nineteen meeting and to reaffirm that we do have your support, that we will have your help. Whether Paul was able this year to free up one or two guys to help with the county in putting those up, that continues moving forward. That's the biggest thing. Otherwise, like I said, we aren't going to be able to continue with this. Our girls and our advisor, all spring, all summer, kept calling, where are our banners? Why aren't they up? Why can't we buy more? You know, we're fielding all kinds of phone calls, and they, the community doesn't understand the logistics of getting those put up.
But can I just fill you in on a couple of things on those banners that you may not even understand? First, Sue Schwarting came to this board, and when she talked, I believe there were seven deceased veterans. And she wanted to know if they could be put in front of the school. And I told her yes, that the village could take care of it. Then the girls came back and they had seventeen more. Well, I figured what's another seventeen? Then, nobody told us that they were going to keep ordering banners, and we were going to end up with, like you said, sixty. But the other thing that has to happen, we can't just, the village, I'm talking the village, we cannot go down and start hanging things on National Grid's power poles. What we have to do is we have to put a request in to National Grid. They have a special form they send out to us. The first seven banners, I went out myself, because I knew Sue told me where she was wanting them. I had to get pole numbers, location of those poles, submit that to National Grid. I told Sue what was going on, so when the next seventeen banners came in, Sue went out with her students and got those numbers. I just went back out and rechecked to make sure I had the right numbers. I submitted that paperwork to National Grid. They approved it. But along with that paperwork, the village has to issue a certificate of insurance. And say, you're walking down that street, one of them banners comes off the pole, say, clobbers you in the head. Somebody wants to sue. National Grid wants no part of it. The village's insurance is what would have to pick it up. So and that's a few steps that really have to happen to do it legally for the village to be involved with National Grid.
In looking at the December of two thousand eighteen, I reviewed the minutes. And at that time, it was said that it would be from Presbyterian Church to the Y, and that we were in full support of it. My thought, Mayor, is in moving forward, that we work in cooperation with whoever we can to come up with a well-written defined plan where we all take ownership, realizing that we didn't expect it maybe to get bigger than that. But in saying that, we said that's what we would do. During that timeframe, Paul wasn't here because we had a change in, we didn't have a superintendent because we had a superintendent leave. And Sue Schwarting is now retired. And so with all that happening, I think a lot of things fell to the cracks. So I would like to suggest that we get some people together and that we, we develop cooperation with whoever it be, Legion, county, understanding that Joe's right. We would take the leadership and the insurance. Because, yeah, National Grid wants no part of that. And we all know that those things can play out anyways. And we work and move forward for the sake of the community and the veterans, and that's, that's my thought.
But the other thing too, Dan, is, and remember this, when the village, if our DPW's involved with putting them up, we need at minimum three guys, because you need traffic control out there. Put those banners up. I'm estimating it'd probably take two days. And it could be, cost the village probably three thousand dollars.
And I guess I hear you, Joe, on that. But originally, I would assume that that hasn't changed from then to now. We said we would support it from Presbyterian.
But when we were supporting it, it was just seven banners originally.
Well, you said, the minutes said Presbyterian Church to the Y. The minutes did elaborate, seven banners, so, you know, that I, you're asking to go back five years. You'd almost have to grab the tape, but I'm not saying we can do...
I'm not saying anything can't be worked out.
Right, and I guess that's where I'm coming from, Joe. We form a committee and we work to, to make this happen to the best of our ability as a community.
But I'm also thinking, maybe the school could put a line item in their budget or something to pay for renting a bucket truck or whatever anybody might have.
Right, that's the original, that was the original when we first started doing it. The county had an old bucket truck. They would allow my guys, which I do have guys that were qualified to run it, they would allow us to go down and get it on our own. We'd use our own DPW guys and put it up. They went and bought a new bucket truck and basically told us, we cannot operate it. It has to be the county. So that was kind of the sticking point for us, or we'd still be putting them up.
I guess it goes back to what I've said.
I guess the other thing I wonder to work on is if possible, there's quite a few contractors out here that ended up getting their own bucket trucks, some of them for contract work, some of them for paying work. Maybe we could get some of them on board to help out one or two days of the year.
Yeah, I mean, we're just, again, we're looking for help because, again, the girls that came up with this a few years ago, they were the end of their middle school years. They were coming freshman. Now they're getting set to graduate and look to go out to college, and they're not going to deq to sustain this. And we want to make sure that we can, because it's so important that we do. I mean, I think what they've started here, we've seen grow in other communities where they're honoring their veterans. And, and maybe they're, they're, they're up against the same roadblocks that we have, and they've been able to maneuver them better than we have. It seemed like as soon as we got them up this, this spring, I took a phone call from the the state saying they had to come down because now we're gonna be milling State Street. But they don't realize what it took for us to get them up, and now to get them down, and then get them back up, it was just like, come on, are you kidding me? So, I just think it's, it's so important that we do continue this, that we do work in collaboration, and, and Paul has been to countless meetings at the school, along with Tim Hunt, trying to promise, but it is that manpower, and I, I, Paul, you might know better, I know that when Tim did take them this spring, and they dedicate, they were able to get those up, I wanna say within a day.
Yeah, I think so.
It was within a day, they went up pretty quick, because I think the hard part is the new ones getting the hardware onto the floor.
The hardware on the floor.
But then, once the hardware's there, they went up pretty quick, so I think it may not take as long, but it's, you know, working in collaboration with the county, or if it's other contractors that do have bucket trucks, that you folks can help us be the leaders in those communications, if you know who they are, because these kids are gone, and, and, you know, if you want...
Yeah, it took us two days to take them down for the baby.
Right.
With the ladder and...
Because you did it with ladders and stuff, right?
Yeah, and it's not very safe.
And you gotta commend the girls, because they've done, they've done a great job with that program.
Well, that's, that's one thing I just wanted to check, and I don't mean to kick the dead horse, but I, this is, in my eyes, the greatest, since I've been on the board, the greatest community project we've done. That's what's gone, uh, I think, Brian, you hit the nail on the head, though, I think it kind of just mushroomed to a level that we maybe didn't expect in any of us. So I, and I think, to a certain degree, whatever issues had gone on, I think the collaboration with everybody, I think, will help, and maybe some communication too, just because, like, I can only speak for this issue, I know my uncle had one that was put up, my mother then called and reached out to one of the girls, talked to one of the girls, and then we ordered one. So I think, just letting people know, like, I think our order was in July. Well, if I order it in July, I don't expect it to be up until the following year. Just to have some sort of timeframe so the community can know what to expect when you go to purchase one of those things. So just, I think, everybody together, and especially with Paul and the manpower, just has to know what's going on.
Yeah.
And one other shout-out to our DPW. My father's banner was over by Gary's that had a, I wanna say a wrinkle, it was just hard to keep it straight, and it looked like it was almost on the verge of being damaged, and that morning, I took a look at it, by the time I was up there, there was three guys with DPW fixing it. So, I think the main, what we've done with it, I, I think it just has to be, the, the public has to know what the parameters are.
Just a question, do you, say we're able to work something out between the county, the Legion, and everybody, what about the school? Can they furnish, say, one of their maintenance guys or something for a day when they're doing that?
I would, I would even do better than that, start our maintenance, because I would like to, we always promote patriotism at, at the school, is to, to free up some seniors, some of our kids to help out, you know, with, with that, whether it's traffic control that you talked about, to do that, because I think, you know, as students, we still need to be a part of it. I mean, and I think that could be the least we could do. But yeah, we're coming up with different, like they said, it mushroomed. If, if you went up by the school last week, or, or online for our veterans, they, we honor every, every student that walked the halls of Lawville by reading their names, and there's over three hundred names, and we're not even sure we've got all the names. Each year, we add more. Now, that was the initial thought from the girls, they didn't think this was gonna take off, that there really wasn't criteria, the criteria was if you're in the military. We've got some folks that are still serving that just went through basic, and they wanted to, so, working with, with, with the Legion and the Marine Corps League is coming up with some criteria of what should be the parameters to, to have a banner moving forward. You know, is it part of World War I, World War II, Korean War, Vietnam conflict? Should that be the criteria? So we're working with them so that when we do open up again, we're able to articulate to our public what the real intent of the project was to be.
I think we had a good idea at one of our meetings about rotating the signs, having, or the banners, having them up for three years, and then giving them back to the people, and I think that's probably something that we should still look, get doing.
And we need to sit down, bottom line is, we need to sit down together and figure it out, but like, even the rotate, I just thought of the two, I mean, like you said, maybe one year we do World War I, and then we do Vietnam another year, you know, some sort of rotation if there's more than we can handle to put them all up at once.
Those banners probably aren't gonna last so long, they're gonna wet.
So I'd be happy to...
The biggest thing is, is hopefully you will still help us and be part of that collaboration so that we do come up with something that does honor the veterans of Lawville.
Since day one, I've had some opinions on it, I can't be more than happy to be in that group. Well, I guess the last question on that was my concern too, was the girls graduating. Is there a group in, I, I, this is five years ago, two thousand nineteen, is there a group in the school they were representing, or was it something on their own?
It's part of our FCC LA Leadership Project.
Yeah.
And again, when you do a leadership project, you, you hope that that moves on, that it doesn't become the end-all, be-all of the FCC LA. So it's kind of, you know, because they've gotta move on, the kids that are coming behind, we don't want them to have to, for that to be their, their sole focus, we want them to come up with other leadership projects. So that's where we're saying that now we, we need the help of, the continued help of the village, the county, and the community to make sure this continues.
I almost think that the big hurdle right now would be to make sure we can get a bucket truck sometimes.
Thank you, appreciate it. Question on that, you have Veterans Park up here, is there any way you can install the banners at Veterans Park?
Well, the only problem up there, no, no, tell them the laws. I mean, now, many, many years ago, John Manfred wanted to do a thing similar to what you're saying, but his wasn't banners, it was names on the back of the pavilion up there. And he couldn't, at that time, John was running programs, and he, but he just couldn't get the veterans organizations behind him. I don't know, he went to, back then, I think, with their baby at the county even, they just, I guess they thought it was a public, too big a project or something, he couldn't get the bag. These girls have done great, really.
Yeah, I see banners going away, so...
The only problem I see with some of the banners is we have to watch where they do get them up, because some of these big tractor trailers, when they pull them in and out of places like Dollar General, like them take them down.
Can, can I request in, in closing, that this issue stay on the agenda under unfinished business until we come up with finished business? Is that fair enough? And maybe it's two months, maybe it's four months, but we have to work with, it's obviously probably more than a project that we as a village may be able to handle as a crew, but as a community, it's not.
Appreciate that.
Well, like, like Brian said, we, we try to get together once or twice a year and talk about it, and, you know, we didn't get together in the summer, but I think if we continue with that, things will move forward.
And, and maybe it's out of, I don't know if the word harshest is the right word to use, but maybe we have something in writing that defines the goal so that they're there. And that should be how well thought our plan is, is done.
Was that it, Brian?
Yeah, that's it's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else got anything on a motorized vehicle? If not, we'll leave it open and move on to record business.
I'd like to say something about that quickly. As we've done in the past, and we've talked about local laws, there isn't any reason that we, if it passes tonight, that we can't say we'll revisit it. I mean, that, we've, we've done that with other ones.
That's true.
If need be.
I'd like to say so too, I'd like to thank the people that came here, because this is a pretty nice crowd, we haven't had one in a while, and they all have very good points. I am definitely against motorized vehicles in the village on so-called trails or whatever. You know, we have problems with snow sliders at our place that aren't even on the trail, but I do have a few issues with the law myself, and I spoke to a couple of boards on it. I honestly don't think it's written at all, and I think it should be declared better. That is my only problem with the law.
Can I comment on that, Tim?
Yeah.
You better welcome to be right. My feeling is, it's like any, any other law that you, that you write, it, it's a ground basis.
I agree.
We pay a village attorney, and the village attorney said that it's fine, and as we move forward, if issues come up, we can address those, and we can always have a color tier in, add, delete, change, whatever needs to happen to make the law suffice for the times. So, I think that, I, I will make the motion later to, to submit this law to the state.
Well, wait, Dan, because...
I'm not gonna do it now, I said later, I said later, and if it passes tonight, then we file it with the state, and we move forward, and we wait for, for that to happen, so...
We've had this conversation before, we can, as Charlie said, change it up, but oh, my whole point was that part of it I don't agree with. As far as the actual point of no motorized vehicles, yes, yeah. I don't, I, I also don't like the e-bike thing, I, I think there's a need for, if, in fact, we're having regular bicycles, I think they should be allowed also, for people that use it.
I think, I think the attorney's concern, if I recall right, was if that wasn't included, that could create its own problems with the law, if I remember the discussion that we had with Joe Russell.
While you know of looking at laws from other areas, that's the motorcycle, they had specific law for, against, because they were having problems with them on the walking trails.
Again, that's something that can be revisited.
All right. Like I say, we'll leave that open, yep. We have approval of minutes of October nineteenth, regular board meeting?
Make the motion to approve those minutes.
A second. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of vouchers. Uh, vouchers, here we go. The annual fund, total of two hundred twenty-one thousand ninety-seven dollars and two cents. Water fund... Let me just say something on the general fund. Little check here, see if I'm right. The reason, one of the reasons the general fund is so high this month is New York State, its local retirement, the police department, forty-four thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy cents of retirement that we have to pay in for all their employees, it's a hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and we're paying that here in November. It's not due until December fifteenth, but we get a discount if we pay ahead, and we figured we'd take advantage of that discount, that's why it's in tonight's, but that's why the, the general fund is so high, because there's a hundred and fifty-some thousand retirement benefits in there. Okay, so we're in.
That's all right, that means December's will be lighter.
Water fund, fifty thousand forty dollars and thirty-four cents, sewer fund, thirty-seven thousand six hundred and three dollars and eighty-eight cents, and a capital fund, total of one million four hundred and seventeen thousand ten dollars and two cents, which I guess the big one there is the monthly payout, but there's a couple of good-sized ones there. So, all of them audited, and I make the motion we pay those bills.
A second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Five Streets Utility or Construction Project, the only thing we're waiting on that is the sewer bond closeout, which was supposed to have been here in November, but EFC contacted us, and now it's pushed off to December first. So, we're just waiting to close out the sewer portion of that project, and we just gotta, basically, I'll be setting up the long-term bonding on that, if they keep changing the dates on us. But they're the one calling shots. Week one of treatment plan.
So, APG is, is dewatering, they're, they're having a setback on the liner with the weather, of course, but they're still planning on coming back and getting that wrapped up for the winter. NCC is, is back working, and SC Spencer doing work around the disinfection building, clearing contact tank in preparation for flipping from, filling Lagoon One, which will, which for a short period of time, will have Lagoon Two shut off, so there won't be any discharge going into the creek, and at that point, we'll do the turnover for the new clearing contact tank. And you have a payout from, I think it's NCC, and it's not several, I don't know, just NCC, yeah.
And that was in our...
That's in the vouchers.
It's in the vouchers, okay.
That's all on that one, Joe.
Groundwater development project, we do have a, a change order on that, but the good news, it's a zero percent change order. Basically, it amounts to, there was a lot of stone that was in the contract, I believe, am I right?
Yeah, so we...
I'll let you explain, but I...
Move on.
Well, we, typically, when we design a water project, we account for backfilling with bringing in usually select stone from outside the project, but as they got through digging out and putting back in the pipe, they realized that the, the native soils were, were fine to be able to backfill with, so the pipe bedding and backfill that we put into the typical contract was not needed, so that was a good chunk of money that the village was able to use to upgrade their access road going up to the wellsite. They were able to put six inches of gravel on, on there, as well as geotextile and nation, so the road will be able to hold up a lot better in, in wet conditions.
So does everybody get a copy of that change order, so they see what we're talking about?
So we had to do a change order because it's increasing the quantities, decreasing one quantity and increasing the other beyond twenty percent, if you do it more than twenty percent, it'd be a, but dollars, we're just taking it out of one budget, not even putting it into another budget.
And we have to account for all of this, because they're going through EFCs. So basically, I need a motion to authorize me to sign that change order.
I'll make the motion.
A second. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Do you have anything else on that?
Yeah, just update you real quick on the project.
That project's been going good.
Yeah, Manfred moved right along, and they're pretty much wrapped up with all of their work outside of the plant. They're planning on starting to work inside of the plant later on in the winter. We just got word, SC Spencer, the electrical guys, they're gonna sub out their conduit work over to Manfred, so Manfred's gonna be installing the electrical conduit in the coming weeks, and that shouldn't take them too long.
And that runs parallel to the water main.
Yep.
And then SC Spencer would come back in the, in the spring to finish up their work. A lot of their items are long, long lead time items, that aren't gonna come in until the spring, so, yeah, both contractors are making good progress, and seems to be going good so far.
I do have, if any board members wanna see any of the reports, stop in the office, I could show them, they got some really good pictures of what they're doing up there, they're really, really good, good job putting that water main in. Really, really good job putting that water main in.
They keep traffic down on that road now, though.
Yeah, it's been running well now. Is that it for you guys?
Yes, thanks, Joe.
Street lighting LED conversion program. We still have three blue lights that we're waiting on National Grid to give us permission to put up. We did receive from National Grid, and it's been sent to KeyBank. If you all remember, we had to get a letter of credit for those disconnect switches. We passed our inspections with National Grid, they're happy with everything. So they've released our letter of credit to us, and they told KeyBank to release it. That's it. Saves us $186,000. That's all I have on that. Comprehensive plan, we did vote to pass that at the last board meeting. But the proper way, everybody had a copy of it, we should have done a resolution for it, which we didn't. So I'm asking tonight for a motion, have our clerk be able to sign the board resolution number 2022-10 to the comprehensive plan for Tom and Billy. That way it'll be done properly. I'll make it. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Anybody thought anymore on dog control? As far as I know, I told you about the dog control officer having that one complaint there when school started? He did get one other one. I guess the lady was on the fairgrounds, and somebody came over with their dog and just let it run loose. But a lot of people, you know, they fetch sticks and whatnot with their animals, get them out, give them some exercise. Myself, I don't think we need to make any changes to our dog control, but that's up to you guys.
A lot of people driving around telling them loose. Everybody agreed on that.
No, I'd just like to be able to get back and tell them what we're doing, because it's already in our law that around playgrounds and things, they do have to be leased. I don't think we need to... He kind of would like the village board to make it mandatory that all dogs are always on a leash when they're outside. And I think most of the people are pretty good about, you know, I see a lot of people walking their dogs and they're on leashes. I don't think we need to mandate that. I do around playgrounds, which we already do. So myself, I don't see any reason for changes, but it's up to you guys.
I would assume, and this is just layman's terms, you have to have control of your dog.
It says that.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, if you lose control of the dog and you don't have it on a leash, shame on you. You've just broken the law. There's a speed limit, I don't know if this is bad comparison or not, but you'd be driving and have control of your vehicle. If you lose control of your vehicle, there's consequences. Yeah, I would agree with you here, I don't think you really have to get too specific with it.
Steven has it?
Yes, I'd say so.
So can I take this off the agenda for next month?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, did everybody get a copy of the draft motorized vehicle local law secret, part one? Anybody have any questions on that?
I make the motion, and we approve that as submitted.
Because I double-checked with Joe, because as you know, on some of these local laws, we have to do the secret and some we don't, and we said this one, we did. That's why I put up a secret.
Do you have to go through it?
You don't have to, if everybody's been through it, I mean, if you're all okay with it, we just need a motion to...
I make the motion, we... The draft that has submitted.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, this one, there's been some discussion on garage sale. Anybody wants to do on that one?
I'm just suggesting one little change in the wording here.
I have one, too.
What's yours?
We no longer have a LaVille's Court. 138-9 penalties of offense says proceedings will be commended in the Village of LaVille Court. It should just be...
LaVille Court?
LaVille Court.
Break that, and then on the couple sections up, 138-7, it says no more than two garage sales may be conducted in any one residence. I think that should be changed to sales may be conducted on the property of any one residence. No more than two garage sales may be conducted on the property of any one residence and/or family household. Because in any residence, doesn't really make any sense, because, me, anyway, I think it should be on the property. Or what you guys think.
So what words do you want to change, Tim?
So, it says no more than two garage sales may be conducted in any one residence or family household during any calendar year. I think it should say no more than two garage sales may be conducted on the property of any one residence and/or family household during the calendar year. That makes more sense to me.
Did you get that, Daniel?
Yep, I got it, I have the word documents, so I can just update it.
Then what I said is just take out LaVille's...
Build a job.
Do you want to say LaVille Court or town of LaVille Court?
Probably town, if that's what it is.
I like the law, but how are we going to monitor that? What's that? How are we going to monitor?
Well, it says in here that it will be... Something about the zoning officer.
It's not so much for people having garage sales, really, it's for... These people seem to think they can put junk out by the curb and have a sale, the same stuff.
24/7.
24/7, month after month. That's what their code is getting complaints on, so that's what we're trying to regulate.
There we go.
So shall I...
So it says under zoning officer, Dan, it says this chapter shall be enforced by the zoning officer, who shall be appointed by the village board, which we know where that office is. So I guess it would be by complaint basis more than anything.
Does this have to be reviewed by county planning board? Kathy Manning? Does this have to be reviewed by Kathy Manning or anybody?
Like, if you're planning on zoning, should I send this to her?
This would have to be reviewed by the county planning.
If the board wanted to move forward with this, I would suggest that we make the change and then forward it on to the county. And then after we hear back from the county, maybe it's going to be a public hearing. Is that a census of the board? You can send that out to the county, right?
Yeah. I think the change is in the morning.
New business. About 40, anybody have anything on unattended business? Not one of the new business. Craft surcharges. September 2022, on the sewer side of things, it was zero, it was a month of September. October 2022, it was zero for water also. No charges this month, for the last couple of months. We don't have to do anything else. General fund budget amendments, we need a motion for amendments.
So we just present it?
I'll second.
I'll third.
All in favor? It's that time of year again, you can be thinking about autumn in the books. So everybody see a copy of Bowers and Company that come in? They want to come in the 28th and start. Guess we need a motion to authorize Bowers and Company to do our annual audit.
I'll make that motion.
That's also going to include, we have to audit the court records through the end of March for this year also. So that's also going to include that.
You made the motion?
Yeah.
I'll second. If Bowers and Company...
In second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have our 2022 tax reliving affidavit. We all have to sign off on it. If anybody have any questions on that? If not? Need a motion to move forward to sign off on?
So I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, before we move on, we start back up.
So I got a couple things, one being new business. I had talked with a couple of board members before about this and correspondence. There was a couple of issues this summer about RVs and camping trailers, basically, the village and people having them parked in their driveways, and basically, people living in them on occasion, or extended stays or whatever. And I'm wondering if we should have something on the books. I did go back and look on their records, there's nothing in the village's law about RVs. Of course, our office works with several zoning laws, and there's several different ones. And I'm just wondering if the village should have something also, because that, in these times, becomes a... I mean, we're getting more and more complaints all around the county, people actually living in recreational gear.
You're thinking of something from limited in the vehicle, right?
Well, just the regulated area. For example, there's a couple of towns that say that you can have them parked in your driveway, you know, for storage only. Or you can occupy them for 14 days continuous, or something along that line. So if you had family come and they were staying in your camper and...
Well, that's what I was just wondering, so you got somebody coming in from California to visit, couldn't you put them up in the camper?
Right, well, this is more the regular people staying there continuous and actually living in a RV. From my understanding, there could be an instance or two in the village that that's already happening. I guess what I'm saying is, I'm going to look into that.
Yeah, it'd be worth it.
Review some of these laws, and maybe come up something for the village. One other thing I want to try, five, was how are we handling the E codes? As far as, how often are we updating the E codes? I couldn't remember what we decided.
We were going to revisit it every six months, but we've been passing a law almost every month. So I was just going to... I was just going to update it as of December again, like we did last year. Because the more, the more we add, the more cost it, you know, it costs us.
How does that work? I mean, it's a certain amount for each law that you update? Because it doesn't make sense to me that if you got 12 of them...
It was two different ones. It's like, it goes, they lump them together. When we got the quote last year, they gave us like, for each code, how much it was. And then if we had a certain amount, I think we got like a small break on doing it. But she even said, if you want to like, if you're going to keep adding them, wait till you have a bunch, and then add them at once, because otherwise they're reprinting all of the papers to constantly put in the books.
That's where they charge you, is the actual pay.
Yeah. And figure there's five here, six in my office, Kathy seven. So there's probably, I would say, at least 10 books that get reprinted. So every time we change it and stuff gets updated, we're reprinting all of those books, too. So I was planning on just doing it in December again, because we'll have, if we have this local law, and then if we have the ongoing garage sale one, and now this RV one, that's another three. So I would say probably as of next month, whatever's passed will be what's submitted. And then we can revisit it again, like next year. If we're not going to pass as many, then we can update it sooner.
Another issue we just had with the neighborhood commercial, too, because that's kind of a different thing. It never got sent back from the state.
Yeah, the state said it was in the wrong department.
But when people are looking, investors and people wanting to come into the village to do stuff, they look at, you know, our local code, our local zoning law, and some of these things that we have changed aren't there, and then it becomes an issue, you know what I mean? If you can tell them one thing, and then the next thing, you know, is we're telling them something actually by looking, like, not me so much, maybe, but elegant in the office, or looking at that as it's written, you know, the copy that we have. So if they're not up to date on what's actually going on, and they tell, say, an investor or whatever this, they're actually telling them it's wrong.
But they are added on the website.
Yeah, general code, once it hits New York, it's supposed to, like, I guess they get notified, so it's supposed to still be on the website. It's not in the actual code book, but there's a list of all the new ones, like separately. And then once general code updates it, then it goes in the actual general code, big book.
Right, but how do they see that?
I think they get notified from the state, I think. I can reach out to her and find out if they get notified, or if like, they have to constantly check. I'm not really sure. I know the zoning one was an issue because they put it, the mail sorter, put it in the wrong department. So it was sitting on somebody's desk in the wrong office. So they backdated it from when we sent it in, so that's been updated. So I think all the ones now that have been sent in have been approved. But I can reach out to the contact at general code and find out how she's notified as to when they are passed on the state. Or if it's something maybe I have to like note, and then shoot her an email so she can upload it. Because I know there's a whole separate section of all the new ones. And then once, like I said, we agree for them to merge everything, then they put it in the big, in the big book.
Yeah, I just feel it's important that we keep up to date, you know what I'm saying, and all that stuff. Maybe more solid than once a year, is what I'm saying, or every six months or whatever. Maybe we need to, because we've been doing a lot of changes, as we all...
Yeah.
Maybe we need to do it more often.
Yeah. I can have our quotas out again and see what you guys want to do.
I asked you emails today, just asking a question.
Did you?
So I asked him that very question, was, you know, do you charge each time? You know what I mean, a specific thing, is it more, you know, at each time, or more, or less if you, you know, have a bunch of them?
Yeah, I think when we got our quote last year, like I said, they did it like per occurrence, per law. And then I think if you had 10 or more, I think they gave you a little bit of a break. So it kind of made sense just to wait, but I don't know.
That really doesn't make sense to me, the business aspect, because they should be the ones pushing, you know, I mean...
To have it updated.
To have it updated, because that's what they do, you know what I mean?
I don't know. I can find out, though, and have it for our next meeting.
Or just let me know.
Okay, sounds like a plan. I'll copy on my email to her.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that it, Ken?
That's it.
All right, going back to motorized vehicles, any more public comments on that?
Joe, could I ask that when you get the draft revised with some of what we talked about tonight, would you send a copy to the planning board, the county planning board? Thank you.
Okay, I guess we need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
I'd like to make a motion that we submit to the state, village of... I'd like to make a motion that we submit to the state, Village Lawville law number seven of the year twenty twenty-two, as read by Mr. Beagle earlier in this meeting. I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
I know one now, Joe, just because of the way it's written, I might know. Nothing to do with the law.
Okay, correspondence. Rayco's November newsletter. Mickey's here, has he got any comments tonight?
No, I just, my next meeting will be on January twenty-fifth. Those in the newsletter there, and we'll send that location, really, as a spot. The promotional video stuff is actually kind of in the final process of being wrapped up, so that should be done soon. We'll mention that Tug Hill has two program interns starting on February first. One's going to go until end of April, the other one's going end of May. So they might be able to pop out in certain projects in the communities. And LED lighting, I know you already talked about it, Joe, and I know Jefferson County finally got their shared service stuff taken care of for their funding too, so all the county jobs out there. Digital radar signs, we didn't have the meeting end of October there, had to come out and show us what they had. So I actually just got, he sent me a message the other day, said, "Did you get the pricing?" And so I said, "No, I never got the email." So he went back and looked, and he sent a, created a draft email and never sent it. So I just got that, just not too long ago actually, so I'll be forwarding that around to all of Rayco's members on what the pricing was that he came back, and we're going to try to look. We have other communities and other COGS that might be interested too, so we might pull everybody together and put on RFP for those radar signs and see what we can get.
We are interested too.
Okay. And the mobile, if I remember right, right?
I know last time we all talked, yeah.
So, so yeah, we'll, I'll send it around, but they sent me for the pricing, and also, like I said, we have some other communities too, even outside of Rayco that are interested, wondering if they can maybe be part of that as well, we can put the whole group together and send it around. So I'll be reaching out to find out what each community wants, and then that'll be...
So Randy made the comment that we might be able to take you back on all of these other communities.
Yeah, so...
And we've done that before with equipment and stuff.
Yep, and they did put that in the contract, because the mobile unit, which I think is what you're looking at, was like twenty-nine hundred, but using the contract for this other community is point one fifty, I think it was. And that's, that's in this pricing that I'll, I'll send it around to. And then, other than that, that's pretty much, oh, we did have the Friends of Blackroom meeting last night here actually, of the working group there. So we're going to move that forward with a few things there, and we have some new members that want to join, and we're going to do that, we're going to set up some goals, and since Tim was there, we're going to give him some chair, no. There he was.
Yeah, I think he was there last night because I wasn't there.
But, yeah, so we're going to move that forward, we have some ideas, you know, where to focus on the group. It's going to be in Lewis County Southern Water was there, so we had some good info.
Just a general naive question, Mickey, I see that Crogan was, is a new member.
Yep.
What's, like, I know when you came to explain this to us or whatever, what generally is there like, I mean, you don't have to name every town or municipality, but is it like a clear majority of the Lewis County ones, or who, what, you know, so who is maybe you understand in there about that?
So, right now with Tom Crogan joining, there'll be now six, six communities from Lewis County and five from Jefferson, so the five from Jefferson were the original group, sorry, my Rayco, but they're just, you know, we're not chopping around to, hey, I'm joining, it's just whoever has an interest and wants to reach out, so that's kind of how it's grown, grown since then.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, Lewis attorneys down here, I've already talked, basically with the LED lighting. Put treasure, you have anything? Phil, you got anything?
No.
Your department?
Nope.
Can I ask a question?
No.
Maybe Phil doesn't know the answer. I know we've been working on getting the permanent, getting pricing on the permanent speed zone signs. Is there any, any updates on that?
Yeah, that's what we were just talking about.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, that's the same thing.
Now, are they the ones that, that they run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, without fail, they're battery operated, and do they say "thank you" underneath them?
Yeah.
I think that's really neat.
Well, he said that they, lots of times don't like putting the words up on there because it can distract the driver, because now they're reading the sign instead of just getting a notification, hey, you're speeding, they can pull their eyes off in the road, so lots of times they don't want to put a lot of messages up on there. But they, you know, with these signs here, it records the data basically, so it just kind of, and if they do run, you can have them run twenty-four seven, or you can actually put a time on it, a time limit, so they can shut down, save on battery if you want it.
So every time somebody goes through, it's like keeping track?
Yeah, so it actually keeps a track, so whenever they, they drive through and then flips the radar, oh, you're over the speed limit, and you can set it, so you can say, oh, if it's over five miles per hour, because, you know, otherwise every time somebody goes one mile per hour, it's going to trip it, then what that'll do is they'll create like a bar chart basically for them. So like, you know, then, like Chief Crogan could go out and say, okay, well, what's the data look like from the sign, and be like, okay, I put a patrol here, because this seems to be the time of day when people tend to be tripping it and speeding through that area.
I think they're very effective.
And we put money in the budget for them for this year, so we should be outside of that.
I think, I go through a lot of communities in my travels, in my business, a lot of communities have them, and boy, you see it, it's holding right now.
And the one thing he did say is, I guess the nice thing with the mobile units too is that you can move them around because if they're permanent, after a while people just get used to seeing them all the time, so they start ignoring it as they're coming in. So with the mobile, you can actually move it around in different streets, so that way you get somebody a different, you know, view of it, and they're more likely to react to it.
And I think the mobile ones don't have wording on, right?
No, no, I think, yeah, the mobile ones do not have wording, like current ones, I think, did.
The permanent ones attached, are they just pulled in the ground or they are?
So the permanent ones would be attached to like a pole in the, in the ground, and if you're going on like a state route or anything like that, then you have to work with the DOT, the D O T on that.
That is a state route.
And they're either powered up or, or solar powered, right? The permanent ones?
The permanent ones, yeah, are either like AC powered or solar powered.
But the portable ones are battery powered?
Yep, and they run about, he said about three weeks, I think it was, on a battery, and that's about the time that you'd want to probably move them anyways.
The guy was up there and gave a demonstration to some of the people here.
Yeah.
Yep, you were on, but it was a demonstration, I'm like...
And he said you can get these batteries from anywhere, it's like Amazon or whatever, so if you want to get an extra battery, you can. Says some of the sign companies have a proprietary battery, so you only can buy from them, so of course it's a lot more expensive doing that.
Plus, I think, the way it collects the data, I think it also shows the state of battery charge too.
Yep.
So, I mean, you can monitor it pretty easy.
Yeah.
All right, Superintendent, I thought you did kind of a rough last twenty-four hours. Just wanted to let the village residents know, we're still doing fall cleanup, you know, weather depending. Today wasn't a great day. Yeah, Joe mentioned, we, we had a water main break this morning at two o'clock. I got to give a shout out to our businesses, our manufacturers, they're outstanding today. Bringing us coffee, communication with Craft today was unbelievable. They offered people to come over and help if we needed it, so as far as the DBW crew is concerned, I mean, I think they're doing a great job, it's, everything's going good.
Did it back together, huh?
Uh, when I, when I left the water and sort of worked it back up.
Is that it, Paul?
Yes.
All right, capital future planning, anything?
No, department.
Personnel, anybody got anything?
No.
My name?
My name's August, I did the August audit, and Chuck is up for September, and I'll do my COVID. Other than that, we're good there.
Please, Inspector Department?
Fire Department, Mr. Murphy attended last month's meeting for me, I don't know if he's got anything to say, and I did get an email from Joe today, or yesterday, Joe's in training down at the academy, and he informs me that Pinky will stay with us till the end of the year, at which time they will go with Rattler.
Makes more sense, Rattler's closer.
Yes. They're happy, everybody's happy, so...
Hold on, we got the radio, we should work out.
That's not what I was told.
Police Department, anything there?
No.
Planning Board, zoning Board?
No.
Municipal Board?
Just a short meeting this month. Tomorrow night.
Town?
That's tomorrow.
County?
Nope.
Recreation?
We talked about the meeting, the collaborative meeting. Devil Play, I said it last month, they've been pretty busy, nothing's really changed as far as that goes. Well, yeah, just try to work out the meeting with the town. First part of the year, I think is what you said last meeting, right, Joe?
Yeah. The only thing I have on the recreation is, worked with Danielle, she did most of the work, put the paperwork together, the skating season, the summer rec program, all the billing is done, and the town received the bill for their share, so that's closed out for the season. Now we got to look forward to the skating season that's coming up. And we just received this week, talked with Mike Young, he and I worked together with Bob Mullin, put in for a grant for, they need new skates for the free skate over here at the, and we put in for a grant, and we did get the grant, a little over fifty-nine hundred dollars to hit skates and things for the program. So that's all I have on the recreation side of it. Ranco, Mickey, just discuss that. Bring us down to public comment, anybody have any public comments?
I just had a quick one there.
Joe?
Joe.
I just want to thank the board for being open to looking at that local law. A year, two or three years from now, maybe amending it, you know, maybe look at the districts that it may affect, may not affect. But I know some of you may know me, may not know me, I mean, I'm passionate for recreation and snowmobiling, and I never thought I'd do what I'm doing now, which is born and raised in Lawville. But I look at, change does happen, and I'm looking at what Tug Hill was in nearly nineteen hundreds. I mean, I'm sure most of us know that, it was logging pulp paper, and the railroad ran through Tug Hill, that's what it was created, and our local club in the turn area actually just took seven miles of the old railroad, the old G and W railroad, and turned it into a trail going to the Pioneer Cafe. Redecked the bridges, everything of that nature. So that served a purpose for twenty, thirty years, lay dormant from nineteen thirty to nineteen seventy, and now that serves this eighty-two million dollar industry here on Tug Hill, and employs eight hundred local jobs. Not only that, I know there's out of a hundred people, you have five bad apples out of a hundred people. Those seasonal residents pay a huge amount into taxes and the services. Anywhere between seventeen and thirty percent of the assessed value in Lewis County is owned by seasonal residents that pay to the same services that we do, that we live year round, and they may be here three times a year, they pay to the school tax, so it's good and bad. But, you know, just in the village of Turn, thirty percent of that assessed value is seasonal homeowners that attend three to four, three to four weekends a year. But, and out of that, I know, and I hear it a lot, in one accident is one too many. I know it's always commented, and we have the most accidents in New York State. There's ten thousand five hundred miles of seasonal trail in New York State, we have five hundred and four in Lewis County. We house eighty percent of the riders in New York State, in Lewis County. There's a hundred and ten registered snowmobiles, so eighty-eight thousand roughly ride in Lewis County. It is tragic that there's one accident, more tragic with one fatality, but it just goes to show if you took the population of a city of Syracuse and put them in the village of Lawville, that traffic, what that would be, that is what does happen, and it's unfortunate that there are accidents on Tug Hill, but it's the five hundred and four miles out of ten thousand five hundred, and we encompass eighty percent of the riders, just due to our snowball. So I know it's, it is terrible that that does happen, but I just wanted to share some of that, you know, terminology, but it is an industry that is here, and it's, they pay the same in taxes, if not more. And they do pay to the tax base and the shared services that the villages, the towns, and the county do provide, and they're only here five, five to ten days out of the year, so...
Can I have a question, Joe? Josh, could I get a report, I've, I've heard that figure of eighty-two million several times, but I've never seen anything that values...
I can give you the economic impact study on that.
Would you please?
Yeah, I can do that, and just for that, I know...
You can email it to me.
Yep, I'm passionate on that, I mean, Flat Rock Road, two to three thousand people travel that a day, Friday to Sunday, every day. That's a slut every, every fifteen seconds. It is, it is impressive, but a lot of the restaurants, bars, and a lot of the residents that live in villages and towns have businesses on Tug Hill, that is their livelihood. That was once a small hamlet like High Market, which was, reason why it was called High Market was because it had the highest market for trappers and fur, that's why it was named High Market. That is now, you know, a bustle for snowmobiling and four-wheeling, so that's all, just wanted to share that. Thank you.
If I have any public comments?
Joe, on, on the rec, you had talked at a previous meeting about getting together the first part of the year on summer rec, and I talked to my board chairman, he's willing to put memberships to that and help you with it and discuss it, so...
Bob and I have talked on that, our thought, what's with the holidays, is everything coming up? Try and get something together after the year.
Yeah, that's perfect, yep, thank you.
That would be figured, give us plenty of time, yes. Nobody else has anything, I guess, anybody have anything for executive discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. I guess we need a motion going into executive discussion.
I'm not emotionally, uh, closed, or actually the board, but I'm not actually mad at all.
For the personnel? I'll second. All in favor?